All right, and it looks like it's six o'clock. So with that, I will call to order this meeting at East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. All Planning Board members are appearing remotely and the meeting is being recorded. First off, we have public speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Can raise your Zoom hand or turn on your camera and wave or unmute. All right, seeing nothing. I think if the board members don't have any objection, we'll put the planning board minutes to the end of the agenda so we can move on to the substance. So first up will be an A and R Salem Derby, fifteen Westview Terrace.
Hi.
Good evening Salem. Want to give us a quick overview of what's going on here?
Yeah, so basically, I'm acquiring six feet of land in my backyard from my neighbor, which is going to allow me at some point in the future to be able to put an addition on the back of my house because of the thirty-foot setback.
Right. So becoming like a big real estate investor buying your six feet, right? That's exciting. The homestead is growing. Okay, any questions from Planning Board members?
The frontage looks.
Curtis, the 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 tables for the two A and Rs this week were awesome. It's the kind of thing that I always feel like we ask at the meeting and now it's just like right there in a table. So I think that's perfect.
Great. But I appreciate the feedback.
All right, I guess with that, I guess I'll see if there's anybody from the public who has any questions or comments. They can address the board. Seeing none. All right, James, sorry to cut you off.
No worries. I'm sorry I interrupted. I motioned to endorse the A and R for fifteen Westview Terrace.
Seconded.
All right, to endorse for fifteen Westview Terrace, James.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And I am an I. All right Salem, we'll get this signed hopefully soon. I'll get into the planning department.
Okay, thanks so much. I have to run over to my ordinance meeting. Sorry, quick departure. Yeah, take care.
All right, and next up is an A and R for John Moran at one nineteen Oliver Street. Is there someone here for that? I see nothing. Curtis, I know you've already done an analysis on this. Is there anything unique about this? It looks like all the numbers are there and everything's.
This looked like a pretty straightforward A and R to me that allows the property owner to fully obtain all the land that they colloquially use as part of their property. There's a driveway that currently is accessible by easement that exists over the property line of their neighbor's property that's being added to their own property. These changes both exist on a public way and neither change makes neither the lot that's getting the new land nor the lot that's that's losing the land nonconforming.
And it does get rid of the easement.
Right.
Sold.
You want to ask the public before I motion?
Uh, yeah, if there's anybody who has any comments, questions on this A and R, you can raise your hand or virtual hand or unmute. Seeing none.
You motioned to endorse the A and R for one nineteen Oliver Street.
Seconded.
All right, voting to endorse one nineteen Oliver Street, James.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And I am an I. We'll get that signed and I guess Curtis, you can communicate with the applicant and let them know.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll communicate with you tomorrow to see if we can schedule sometime this week.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right, flying through this thing. And currently up now, we have a public hearing for Terrace Harnish Patel seeking modification of the two thousand and nineteen site plan review for a three-story mixed-use building with first-floor retail, twenty-three dwelling units, including five affordable units located at forty-seven and forty-nine Cottage Street. So is there someone here for the applicant tonight?
Kevin Perry from Five Star Building Corp.
Hey Kevin, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Excellent. So we, I think this has been before us twice now. And at least at the first meeting, we had a lot more people than this that were there. But I think looking at this, because I was trying to think back to that first hearing and I, Chris, I can't remember if you were on the board for that or not. Yeah, you were, right? And there were a lot of issues with sort of how the storefront looked and access and things that I wanted to make sure that we didn't like fiddle with, but I actually, my first look at this, it looks like you raised all the or addressed all those concerns. It looks it looks to me a lot better from a sort of street view, but why don't you give us sort of an overview of what what's going on here?
Sure. So also Dan Bonham's on the on the Zoom here. He's a our designer. We're working with the design build. We're the construction manager for a project. So Dan's from Tom Bugless. So Dan can speak to some things as well. But Curtis, I don't know if you want to do a screen share. I'm working remotely, so my screen share is not as.
Sure thing. Um, I'm gonna go in. Which thing would you like me to pull up? The site plans or the elevations?
Perhaps we can start with the exterior elevations if you want to share the full color ones.
Sure. Give me one second.
Sure.
I could quickly share those two if that's convenient for you Curtis.
I'm comfortable with that. Yeah, you've got co-hosts as well. You're you're all set to go for it. I can pull up as well, whichever you prefer. Do you also have copies?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. Yep.
Well, Dan's pulling that up. I'm happy if you'd like to give you a quick rundown of kind of the history of this and how we ended up at this point.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks Kevin.
So Harry had reached out to us regarding this project and looking to get some pricing and I guess Ziggy Port had originally drawn this and you know, I don't want to speak out of out of school, but I guess to have a good understanding, we have to be honest about the history of it. So essentially it was designed with very little input from the owners. And it became to be a project that was made with, I believe, nineteen one-bedroom units. And quite frankly, the project just wasn't financially feasible. Also, the project, which seemed to be a sticking point for the town, was that the existing Jim's Package Store would really remain and this building would be built around it. The owners hadn't been exactly told that that wasn't feasible from a standpoint of trying to leave the package store open. They were somewhat led to believe that you'd be able to operate the package store with nearly, you know, zero downtime and, you know, spare you the details, but the long and short of it is that just isn't feasible for a variety of reasons. So, long story short, it it basically came time to nearly scrap the the design. So luckily, the site plan could remain almost untouched other than a few changes I'll show you. So that was very convenient. And we also felt that we were able to bring, quite frankly, a better project to the city in multiple ways. One aesthetically, this is actually, I think, bears a striking resemblance to some of the neighbors had brought forward some renderings. Actually, they were so opposed to it, I think if you some of your folks were were involved in that they created their own renderings to show what they would like. I think this more or less matches that. You know, we actually kind of liked the design. It was funny when the owners brought it to us and it became apparent Jeff had shared and Curtis had shared as well. That's it's actually better than what you have. So it also came clear that leaving the Jim's Package Store and building around it wasn't feasible for a variety of reasons, from the logistics to it, to the aesthetics, in my opinion, and also it was just a poor use of square footage. Especially being that the project was not financially feasible, given nineteen one-bedroom units. We had to make some serious changes. So that brought us to the plan that you see in front of you today. This this plan essentially now removes the Jim's Package Store and adds retail, a potential of three units. Most likely two. We would like these units approved for retail or commercial use. There is a chance the package store goes back in there. But there's also a chance that it does not and the package store is no longer on this site. Can't really get into the details, much beyond that, just to say that that it may not be there anymore. So we don't want to seek approval for strictly a package store. We've made changes with with Dan's help to the exterior that we feel is far more aesthetically pleasing, such as having storefront on the on the face of it. Adding entrances that were not previously there off of Cottage Street. So it's not just Adams, which those entrances, when you'll see on a floor plan, will lead to both retail or commercial spaces. And overall, I think we just have a far more aesthetically pleasing design. In order to make this work, we did have to increase the unit count from nineteen to twenty-three. But more importantly, it's a mix of bedrooms, which we also feel better serves the town, offering simply one-bedroom units in the downtown was just not a viable model for us. So this will be a mix you'll see of eight one-bedroom units and fifteen two-bedrooms. Again, for the the total of twenty-three more units. And then, like I mentioned, instead of what was one retail, just a package store, we now add some variety to this and have up to three retail and commercial units. Ideally, we would get some type of restaurant space, things like that in there, but you know, we don't have any tenants. It's far too premature to speculate on on what those may be. So I could turn it over to Dan to just walk you through the finishes unless you have some high-level questions and then I'm happy to go into more detail on on some of the other aspects. I guess another thing actually before I end to point out, which we will review on the site plan. We also have now outdoor seating, kind of a little patio area that we feel will be really beneficial perhaps for you know, again, a restaurant or kind of a sandwich shop, something like that, as well as some bike racks, things like that, storage down off the side to help to encourage the tenants to have bike, you know, use bicycles and and things like that, as opposed to necessarily every tenant having multiple vehicles. But if anybody doesn't have any issue, I'd like Dan to kind of run through the finishes and give you an idea of that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Questions at the end.
Okay.
Okay, so thanks Kevin. Thanks to everyone for having us tonight. I guess I'll go start with the the first page, which shows the site, which I think you're all familiar with. But what were this shows really the conceptual finishes, which is a facade that's primarily brick with a series of storefronts wrapping around from Adams Street out on to Cottage Street. Typical storefront entrances with awnings, something more very kind of fitting to downtown. And then on the corner, what we've done is pulled the building back just a little bit. So we'll have some outdoor seating there and I can switch to the image that shows that a little bit better. This is looking up towards towards Mount Tom, looking up Cottage Street. You can see we have a series of bike racks here in the corner. Some trees planted there and some outdoor seating in front of the what most likely would be a cafe, but also be ice cream shop or, you know, some other type of restaurant. That space could be dedicated to the retail or could be just kind of public space, depending on how it's looked at. Then from this angle, you can see we have the first two floors are brick. Very familiar downtown, consistent with everything else. And then up above, we're thinking something more like a board and bat type of finish. And what that does is helps to break up the facade a little bit, diminish the appearance of the height of it. It is three-story. Most of the buildings here are two, although it's not exceptionally large in terms of the overall scale of it, but I think it does help to kind of bring it down to the a familiar scale with the rest of the buildings along Cottage Street. And if you can see my cursor, you can see there's an entrance, the main entrance here kind of in the middle of the facade. And then also one here at the smaller, the kind of corner retail. So that one in the middle could go into the kind of main retail space. Switching back to the view. Looking back towards downtown, you can see the retail wrapping around the corner. Awnings, sort of a very familiar downtown streetscape. And brick coming all the way around the corner and then we kind of drop the scale down as we wrap the corner on Adams Street. So main facade materials are storefront. Probably a precast stone base here that's gray, you see along the bottom. Then brick veneer and then a board and batten type standing scene type look above. We haven't finalized that material yet, but ideally it's worth. I think that pretty much covers the streetscape.
Anybody have any questions on that before we possibly review the floor plans next, the layout?
And the parking, I'm just trying to figure this out because it seems like it's a little different than what I thought. But so is the parking still going to be in the back where it currently is, more or less?
The parking will run in the back. There's multiple spaces. We can pull up the site plan if you'd like, as well as if you're looking at it from Cottage Street, the left side, that's actually where the bulk of it is, which would be potentially the tenant parking there. And then there are some spaces in the in the rear along the Adam Street side as well.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. Okay.
Can you see my screen? Can you see that on my screen, the site plan now?
No, we're still seeing the last one.
Yeah, essentially, Jesse, there is really no changes to the site plan other than now we can see that Dan. Zoom in just a little bit. So in the in plan view, if you're looking in the lower right-hand corner, you can actually see where it says the existing retail.
Yep.
So that used to be more or less, they did have some addition to it, but that used to be more or less where the corner of the building was. And it seemed to be with a lot of people's feedback from the community, even though, I mean, we should keep in mind that it it is approved as it was previously designed. So you know, bringing this forward, we feel is an improvement, but the the big pushbacks, part of it seemed to be the mix between, you know, the newer building and then leaving this somewhat oddly placed, you know, old former package store that you're just building around. So the only real major change to that site plan you can see is that we sort of squared that area up.
Gotcha.
But as far as parking and things like that, it it remained primarily the same as far as, you know, water sewer tie-ins, things like that. It it all has stayed substantially, you know, the way it was. It's mostly in the facade and then the interior floor plan changed as well.
Fifty-eight spaces, is that correct?
No, thirty-four, I believe.
Yeah, so one of the things, right Kevin, is because you added more units now, the the parking space requirement goes up, right? So I think you are looking for a waiver on the the number of spots, is that right?
Correct. We are encouraging, you know, obviously, we're going to do everything, being a downtown building, we do feel you know, both Harnish areas partner and myself, we we all own actually properties in downtown. And we do find that primarily about fifty percent of the tenants are not having any vehicles at all. You know, they're walking, taking public transportation, things like that. Especially, you know, the more sort of pedestrian-friendly and businesses work move into the downtown more and more are, you know, foregoing vehicles. So we feel comfortable with this number, the fact that we have twenty-three units, we're offering over one space per unit. On top of the fact that you will have additional parking for the retail or commercial space. So, you know, we certainly are conscious of the fact that, you know, by the the current zoning charts, you know, or parking regs, if you will, it's requiring a higher number. We feel that this works. It's in the smart growth district. And we're going to do everything we can to also offset that, like I said, with the bicycle parking, you know, encouraging the PVTA and making sure potentially we reached out to them about having this as a stop on their bus routes, things of that nature.
Kevin, would you mind running through that with us a little bit? Twenty-three spaces for the tenants guaranteed, and that makes sense. They got to have a space for the tenant. And then you've got some left, which is what eleven spaces. Are the twenty-three all on the what I'm looking at here, the left side of the building? Or are they kind of on the mix of that back right part? Or can you can you kind of designate where you intend the the residential spaces compared to what might be a commercial space?
Well, they have not been, the the plan would not be to specifically assign one or the other, you know. The thought process there is somewhat shared. I think simply by the layout, the the parking on the left side is going to lend itself to tenants because that's where the residential entrance is. But however, there will be an entrance most likely that will offer access into the common areas off of that parking space, parking area off of Adams. So I think just by layout alone, the left side will end up kind of defaulting to a residential parking, but there was not any intentions as far as assigning one or the other. If it ends up being a you know, a coffee shop or a burger joint or something like that on that front smaller retail, I would anticipate that a couple of cars may park, you know, on that left side and run up the steps there and into the retail.
I mean, I can imagine that lots of people are going to try and park in there. Are you going to strike specifically number and put up a, you know, non-tenant will be towed for the tennis spots?
Well, it's sort of a management call. I mean, what we've done in other developments throughout the state and even, you know, things like we've done at Parsons Place in East Hampton is is quite honestly somewhat of a wait-and-see. We don't like to pigeonhole ourselves because we actually find that when you figure the flow, having that twenty-three union units, the fact that even if you say conservatively, three of them don't have a vehicle, you really have ample space because people are coming and going. You know, it's rare that you're going to find everyone there. It is there at the same time, except maybe late in the evening, at which time the retail is is most likely, you know, not going to be operational and tying up spaces. So we don't like to pigeonhole ourselves into saying, yes, we're going to assign all these spaces. We like to see how it goes. If it becomes a problem, then the next step is for the management of those units to then assign one space per unit.
Okay.
I don't want to jump off the rails, Jesse, so correct and correct the process if I do, but I'm curious about the trash. And if you could just kind of walk through where that is.
Yep, if you'll see in plan view, again, in the upper-left corner, there is a proposed dumpster location that would potentially be two four-yard dumpsters, a recycling and a typical rubbish.
Bent stand?
Yes, on three sides. You know, usually we leave the front open because there's just so much traffic there and it ends up being a problem if you put the gate there. So they don't tend to last for.
Okay, and one last question about the parking there. I see that you've sort of designated, at least that these old eyes can see, three handicap spots. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you said you didn't kind of want to commit to a lot there, but those are committed. You, there's.
Committed handicap spots, yeah.
Okay.
And so board members in public, just to be clear, I'm just looking at the ordinance about parking. We can grant a waiver if the lesser amount of parking will not cause excessive congestion, endanger public safety, or that lesser amount of parking will provide positive environmental or other benefits. We could take into consideration off-street parking, public or commercial facilities in the vicinity, shared spaces, age or other occupancy restrictions, impact of parking on the physical environment and any other factors that we want to consider.
This is specific, and I just want to play off of that comment. That's specific to projects from the Smart Growth Zoning District, in which this particular project, forty-seven forty-nine, is applying for a site plan review per section seven point four in the East Hampton Zone ordinance. So this is, that's a waiver that's specific to this zone and not to everywhere in the city.
Good point, Curtis. Thank you. Kevin, what about the lighting? I know there's some lights that are proposed for the parking and on the building. Can you talk a little bit about that and and where that's going to shine and any light spillage, things like that?
Sure, those are denoted on the plans. Those haven't really changed from the original approval there. You know, they would certainly conform to all the, you know, night sky regs, things like that. And they would all have shades on them so we can direct them and keep them simply in our parking lot and not outside of that. But those are the same as originally approved.
And what about, oh, sorry, James. The only other thing I was thinking is, you know, I know there was a traffic impact study that was done with the first application. Is there any substantive change here? I know there'll be a few extra units which add sort of minimal traffic for residential units, but anything else that would sort of give you cause to sort of not trust those numbers that were presented last time?
I think if anything, the potential that there this may not have a liquor store, you know, would be an improvement. It's going to cut down on the traffic. You know, potentially this is office space on the first floor or retail, but I think as far as in and out traffic, liquor store is probably, in my opinion, one of the highest uses, sort of perhaps, you know, cannabis is up there with it, you know, retail cannabis shop. But, you know, that has a high, high volume within and out, quite a few transactions a day. So if anything, this should be a a decrease from that. And the number of bedrooms, you know, we we saw increase, but the unit council increased by four, so.
But that's assuming there is no liquor store, which is a maybe.
That's true. And if that is, then that's a constant from the last approval and what we're looking at is essentially four more units.
James, you had another comment or question?
Just a couple, and they're they're just minor. I'm just kind of going over stuff kind of for the record here. I see that there's four plantings that are out front. Is that right? For for trees, maybe? Am I wrong about that?
Yes, there's other plantings in there. It's zoomed out a bit, but yes, there are other plantings, but primarily there are four trees there.
Okay, and how tall are those trees expected to get?
They would be in keeping with the other ones, other trees downtown. I'd have to look that up, but they're the pear trees. They're the same as like we have in front of the button building. You know, potentially they would require some level of maintenance. I mean, the ones in the button building at this point haven't been done for probably, you know, twenty-five years, so they're a bit towering. But these would need some maintenance every, say, five years. And we try to keep them proportionate to the to the building.
Do I see that it says they're pear trees?
That's what's proposed, yes.
Rooting?
Yes. Yeah, that's what we have now in other places downtown. That's what's there now.
I saw that there was a, just in the in the rendering, that there looked to be a signboard maybe up on the second floor of the of the corner. Do you know about how big that signboard is? Is it, I guess my question is, is it within the sign ordinance?
Yes, everything that we would propose is going to fall within the sign ordinance. So it kind of depends on, A, what wasn't decided is if the owners would like to kind of name the building down the road, that may go on there with the address, make it easier to find. Or perhaps if it is one store that ends up taking the bulk of the retail location on the first floor, that may go up there, but we would certainly want this to fall within the sign ordinance.
And one more thing, in this new design, kind of overlaying the old one, is the Batumina's surface amount changing at all?
No.
All right, that's it for me, Jesse.
Any other questions, Chris?
I have a basic question. I have a basic question. The floor plan shows you have on floor two and three, ten, ten units, four one-bedrooms and two, or six two-bedrooms. And I'm counting nine units, not ten. I'm counting five two-bedrooms. Is that because this plan is considered conceptual and you'll be modifying the the layout to get an extra bedroom in the second, third floors?
Yeah, we actually have a an updated plan, which I could share.
Okay.
Not quite as polished as this one, but yeah, it shows the the same count that's on the the table.
Yeah, that would be helpful because it's, as it is, it looks like the layout's pretty congested as it is with nine units. I'm just interested to see what a ten-unit plan would look like. I don't know if that's even in our jurisdiction, but just kind of didn't make sense.
And are you able to pull up?
I don't have it at this moment, no, but you know, the unit size doesn't really change. We're about eleven hundred square feet for the two bedrooms and about seven hundred square feet for the one bedroom. So they're they're good-sized units. They're really just each into the the utility, the common space and utility space.
Okay. That's really all I have. I mean, it seems straightforward. I think it's a better plan for the retail. I like that there's actual doors in the front of the building now, which I was really, I had issues with in the first and the previous version, so. I was really, I had issues with in the first, in the previous version, so. I think this is better, as far as from a retail point of view, I mean. I'm a little bit concerned about the parking, that um, we're not gonna have designated parking. I think that's gonna cause, but that's. We can talk about that, as far as when we get to the waiver discussion. So I don't have any other comments at this point.
James?
You know, I thought, I had a memory of the last meeting, and I remember that there was a discussion about that chain link fence that goes down to the uh. Kind of swear apartments, which is, as as I remember, a steep grade there. Um, and there was some concern about erosion and such. Is anything changing in the design with that chain link fence, Kevin? Uh, from the original approval?
Uh, no, not at this time, no. I mean, I'm not sure what the concern was. We're not really disturbing, you know, right up against that for the most part. And where we are, you're gonna have a salt fence, and that salt fence won't be removed until vegetation is established. So, you know, I don't think there'd be any cause for erosion there.
Okay, uh, if it's the same, fine. Uh, also, just out of curiosity, was there any thought put to um, affordable housing for any of these units?
There is, as part of this submission, we have the Affordable Housing Plan, so that has to, or, you know, the the low-income plan, so um. I have to pull it up, I believe it's four units. Uh, we were proposing for those, uh, it would be the one-bedroom units. And that that package, uh, along with all the DHD paperwork and things is is part of the planning board submission.
Good. I think, I think it expanded to five units. Is that not right, Kevin, with this proposal?
I apologize, I have to pull that up. I believe that uh, it would be twenty percent, however, uh, we were looking to get the waiver on it to bring that to the fore. To keep the um, uh, essentially that the project financial is feasible. It seemed to be that there was some flexibility in that with the board's decision, and Curtis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and that's not the case there, but. Uh, that was, the affordable portion was done by Timmy O'Leary, uh, Harnish's attorney.
I.
Go ahead.
Um, just cuz that was a question of me, I'll demure on that one. I remember discussing it briefly during the. Uh, pre-application meeting, but the, when we asked for the amended, um. Affordability agreement, the afforded, the amended affordability agreement says, went from four to five units, um. And went down from a typo, just like it said, two hundred and thirty total units, down to twenty-three total units. So that's the most recent information that I have, as far as I know the, um, but. Um, uh, we, I would have to look into that, whether the board would have flexibility on, uh, potentially granting a waiver on the subject.
Yeah, I'm not sure either if we have, uh, if we can grant a waiver on that. I've I've only saw, I only saw the number that said it was going from four to five. With the new modification, but.
Um, yeah, you 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 might be right, and I apologize, I should have had that in front of me, and uh, so that one just didn't quite fall under our.
At the, at the risk of, at the risk of expanding a little bit on that one, outside of, uh, um, based on discussions that were like briefly bandied around. One thing that I remember, uh, in which I did say that the board and the city ordinances provide flexibility. Isn't the nature of those units, um, the affordability requirements for the city of East Hampton. Don't require a breakdown by number of bedrooms, they require a breakdown by number of units. I remember one proposition we're floating was potentially that all of the affordable units would be single-bedroom.
Correct, and that that is.
And that is within the purview of the planning board to approve.
Well, you're right, you know, I just looked this up, you're right. So you had, that that's what it ended up being. It is the five, uh, but it's at the one bedrooms.
So that was my, that my understanding is that you were discussing the flexibility and what's the nature of the affordable units that we need to provide, and as long as they are. Interchangeable with the market rate units of the same type, and that they're not the only units of a single type, i.e. they're not the only single bed. Uh, bedroom units in the building, then the planning board can grant, uh, can approve the affordability plan. My understanding of that, that there are eight total proposed, single-family, uh, single-bedroom units in the total structure. And they're not all concentrated on one floor, it's four and four between floors two and three, and therefore it meets those criteria.
And it will be five that will be affordable?
Yeah, yeah, but it's it's split four and four, yeah, sorry. Yeah, and Kevin, could you just confirm that? Is it five total?
It is five, it's five one-bedroom out of the eight, uh, one-bedroom units proposed.
Great.
Okay, great, love it.
Um, any other planning board questions? All right, any questions or comments from the public? Uh, you can raise your Zoom hand, or if you're on camera, raise your actual hand, or. It's a small crowd, if you wanna just unmute and ask to address the board.
I'd like to address the board.
Excellent, can you give me your name and address, please?
Daniel Ferreira, for Adams Street, East Hampton.
Great, Mr. Ferreira, what would you like to ask or say?
I'm just curious, I could not tell from the diagram, will Cottage Street Motor Service Station be removed in this building plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, Mr. Ferreira, I think one of the big distinctions this time is, I I believe the whole lot's gonna be demoed and leveled, is that right, Kevin, and then start from scratch?
That's correct, that that's a substantial change, other than, you know, obviously what we feel is improving the aesthetics of the outside, the substantial changes that the. Liquor store would no longer just kind of be built around, it's removed, and uh, you know, that is all new construction in that area.
So, Mr. Ferreira, you have a garage that's gonna come down too?
I see, very good. I have one other question.
Sure.
Uh, do you know if management will be occupying or residing in the building?
I can't say that for certain, uh, but I would say most likely no. Uh, this group owns a substantial amount of real estate in the area, and they have a central office. Uh, I believe on Northampton Street, so I I can't say it would never happen, but I don't anticipate onsite management.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, any other comments or questions? Uh, Curtis, yeah?
I have a few quick, uh, housekeeping ones. Uh, one thing I wanted to remark for the certification of the board. Is that both of the structures, uh, that are proposed to be demolished, the um, the older garage structure on forty-seven Cottage. And the package store forty-nine were hypothetically subject to um, review by the the historic commission. The historic commission has already given an okay on this project. I know that's not exactly the most technical answer, because I forget the nomenclature for what form their okay takes. But I do know that in their most recent um, meeting, uh, the these two structures were brought up and. Uh, explicitly, they were gonna be demolished as part of this project, and the the commission gave their okay on it. Um, the second thing is that, uh, the engineer commented that there is a, uh, there's a. Forgive me, I just wanna find my note. The Cottage Street is subject to a road moratorium. And uh, that means that, uh, any changes made to the road may be brought back to the exact same standard that they presently exist at. Um, I don't believe that is a a hard stop to anything for the project. But I would, I would strongly recommend that you coordinate with the city engineer's office, um, specifically Dan. To go over any excavation that you need for um, utilities under Cottage Street.
Yeah, we we spoke with them, and um, I would. There's other options, uh, and they wanna work through that with us, and and you correct, the moratorium's in place, and I would believe, uh. Off the top of my head, I believe it would mean we'd have to mill about a hundred and fifty yards. Uh, of pavement, so it seemed as though the better option, but we're kind of, you know, they sort of left it as a, let's get this approved. Work through it on the site, we'll shoot some elevations, is more than likely to tie in on Adams Street for everything. Uh, there's also conversation that there's potentially, um, a a water line that we could tie into or sewer. Running through the access way that was the Art Street Development Project, if that's what fifteen maybe, or something like that. So, um, we had a few onsite meetings, and I I would say there's a very good chance we do not go into Cottage Street. We just don't have it at the budget to build that much.
That makes, that makes sense to me. Will that impose any changes other than the location of utilities?
No.
Okay.
No, it's simply the, you know, we just need to make sure the inverts work, it's simply tying in there, and we'll just bring it into the building at a different location.
This may have been mentioned elsewhere, um, but my understanding, and I just wanna commit it to the record, is this building is fully sprinklered?
Correct.
In the, in the retail spaces as well?
Oh, yes, yes, wood frames fully sprinkled, yeah.
And then last thing, so you've mentioned a variety of potential uses to the board this evening, um, all of which are obviously within the board's purview to grant. Under, you know, an amendment of the site plan, or reopening of the public area of the site plan, whichever people consider appropriate. It strikes me that you were approved under twenty nineteen for a general retail. But you've mentioned a restaurant, office, and like a couple of other hypothetical uses that might fall under the all other. Of all under commercial activity, so restaurant and bar number thirteen, general retail number twelve, which is what I would say a package store would fall under. Uh, office space number thirty-seven, and all other professional establishment number thirty-four, um. To provide you with maximum flexibility, do those uses sound like they cover? The most likely end uses of the ground floor retail spaces?
They do, and and, you know, I don't wanna speak for Harnish, but I would. I feel comfortable saying that if it's something other than that, we have no issue coming back for for approval, if it's some sort of a, you know, a use that does not fall into there. But we feel that what would be best for the downtown, in our opinion, is really to try to bring in specifically retail and restaurant into those. Perhaps a small coffee shop, something like that, but um, it's it's premature to to start marketing that at this point. So we we would like to leave that as as broad as possible.
So in order to, for our board on our side, our perspective, the, what the board would need to do. Is also explicitly commit to the record this evening, uh, or or whenever they reach a decision on the matter. Uh, that they want to add uses, uh. Number twelve, general retail, number, no, sorry, number thirteen, restaurant slash bar, number thirty-seven, office. And number thirty-four, all other, just to cover their bases, under the understanding that a package store, number, you know, general retail number twelve. Was always considered to be part of this project.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and then if anything else comes up, like Kevin says, you can come back and we can see if it's a modification or not, and how to go from there. Um, anything else, Curtis, from your end?
No.
Um, any other public comments or questions? Planning board members, any comments or questions? James?
So, I really like this. I think it's a big improvement. I I liked the other plan before, it was improvement, this is even better. Uh, I don't really see anything here that, that I would see personally would stand in my way for approval. But I just had one little bit of a concern that that Chris pointed out. Um, was that, you know, the numbers didn't quite match up in terms of what design we had. And I have a little bit of worry that we don't have the most up-to-date design to approve tonight. Um, I I'm not sure that's gonna stop me, but but I wanted to bring it up, like, is this what we're approving?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that too, cuz you know, Kevin, our decision is gonna be based on the plans that we have, so it's kind of hard, um. Uh, it's kind of, if if the current plans don't show all the units, I'm not sure exactly how that'll work.
Well, we're looking for the unit count, um, you know, we are, we do have that layout. I mean, if if we had to go to another meeting, we we could do that, we we were trying to get it through here, but if we can't, we can't, but. You know, we are firm on that unit count, uh, and we also are firm on the unit square footage, that these are large units. Like I said, the smallest unit, I believe, is seven hundred for a one-bedroom, and we have twos that are exceeding eleven hundred. Um, so, and then the retail layouts and locations are remaining essentially as it is.
I, I, in that context, we actually don't need the actual floor plan. I mean, we generally don't, um, have jurisdiction over what sort of the inside layout is. Anyway, other than a few unique situations, so if we have the unit numbers. And the space that's involved, I think that's probably enough for us to make. That if people are comfortable with it, but I mean, I I think that that meets the sort of bare minimum of what we would need in a decision, and you know, we we don't, um. Frankly, I I think other than thinking about queuing plans inside of a cannabis dispensary, we don't spend a whole lot of time worrying about where a hallway's gonna go. Or how big this bedroom is. So, um, I I guess that that should be sufficient, assuming we get there.
I would agree. I have a question about construction schedule. When is this being planned for construction?
In a perfect world, we would be breaking ground on this or essentially demoing. Hopefully in July or August. I will say that, um, that is a big if. We need to move on this extremely fast because of the lumber pricing, uh, essentially all material pricing is so volatile. That was part of our hopes of actually getting this approved this evening. I know it's a stretch, and certainly we are not entitled to that by any means, but. Timing is of the essence to to really start this. There's some price increases we're expecting this summer, and we're trying to lock that in before, so. There is a small chance that, quite honestly, this project does get shelved for a bit, uh, if things just get too volatile. But right now, we have the green light to move kind of full steam.
Uh, and Kevin, what what's the timeline for when you break ground to when you sort of expect to be able to open the doors roughly, obviously?
In a optimistic world, twelve to thirteen months. Uh, we are having, again, the mid, not only material pricing, but lead time, uh, we have a project that I couldn't get joint compound on the other day. So, some, you know, things you just, you just never in a million years would have thought, so. You know, ideally, I can see is next summer.
Things we all took for granted, right?
Yeah, I never thought a lot of things, but I I never thought.
Okay, so, um, Harry, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, I mean, to me, I think the only tough issue here is this issue with a parking waiver, um, and I think there's a. There's potentially, maybe there's an issue with whether these mark, these spots are marked, but um, that might be secondary, it might be a problem for the landlord. The the parking waiver thing, I mean, I I know we're, um. You know, there's, there's been a push in East Hampton and across the state, frankly, reduce parking requirements and and try to move away from. That kind of waste of space. It's also in the middle of downtown where I think whether it's perceived or actual, there's fear of a parking shortage. So there may be spillover into public spots, but um, I'm curious what other planning board members think about the reduction. James?
You know, I want more parking in our downtown, but I think that this project is providing a sufficient amount. I think that with the city hall parking nearby. Um, you know, it it provides an overflow that's within a reasonable walking distance. And I think the value the project adds overall, uh, outweighs the need. You know, I do think as a community, we may come up as continued developments come in with a, with a point where that may change, but I don't think this project is doing that. Uh, so I'm in favor of granting the waiver.
Yeah, I feel the same. I mean, I think that the overall existing conditions of this site are just so terrible. But this is only an improvement, and this new design is an even better improvement from the last time we saw this last year, so. I mean, I feel like, um, I'm willing to consider the waiver as well, just for the fact of the improvement, improved site conditions.
Harry, any objection to the parking waiver, yeah?
No, the only, the only question I have is about delivery, you know, somebody bring something down here from one of those retail stores, where are they gonna park? Are they gonna park on the side and the back and walk around at the front, or what are they gonna do?
Good question, Harry. Do you have a loading zone or anything like that, Kevin, in this plan, or space for that?
Uh, well, in the rear, you know, the liquor store, you would potentially have one parking spot that that might get lost if they take deliveries. Um, you know, again, that hasn't really changed since the original design. Um, it's one of those situations that it's, it's kind of hard to plan for until we know what what this is, and it would sort of become a management issue to work. Work through that. Um, you know, I wish I had a great answer for you, but the the fact is, if an attorney takes one of those. It's a different story than if a bakery takes it, um, and and I just don't have that in in, you know, firm details. But, you know, I would assume it's, it's not gonna be any more challenging than, say, small oven taking, you know, their deliveries. Each morning with a trailer truck out front or that type of thing, um. You know, I would anticipate them to use, if it's for the front little one with the patio. One of the first two spaces, you know, early morning, and if it's out back, then we certainly have the ample parking out there for the retail and coming through those doors.
Yeah, I think, I think as you sort of indicated, you know, at some point, you may end up with problems on your hands as the building owner, either disgruntled employees. Or customers that don't wanna come there and things like that, but um, I do think some of that is sort of internal politics. Once the project is off the ground, it looks like there's certainly enough space, in my opinion, to support the project. Harry, any other questions or comments?
No, no.
Okay. Um, any other comments or questions from the public? I see nothing, um.
Before I make a motion for you, Jesse, uh, can, is it all right with you if we add the, um. Uh, Curtis had some specific, um, use numbers. And I think that's a, I don't know that that's a condition, but I think we need to just sort of explicitly state that we're doing that.
Um, I think the decision would, would be approving, um, I don't think we need to put it in our motion, but I think that when we, when we put together the decision. It'll not only have all the details about units for residential and the breakdown for affordable and market rate, but also. List the specific categories of uses, which I think was general retail, other retail office and restaurant bar.
Yeah. The only thing I, and the only thing I wanted to make sure that we knew there is that East Hampton conflates restaurant and restaurant serving liquor. So like a restaurant and a bar are the same in its definitions. As long as we're totally comfortable with that, that I completely agree. I just wanted to make sure the board saw that as well.
Okay, so you don't feel any of that needs to go as a condition or as a finding and that we're just going to sort of agree that there's no one here that disagrees with that?
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it's going to go in as part of the decision, so the approval will only be for those uses. And then, and so, you know, they can't just, you know, put a cannabis dispensary or something like that in there without coming back to us for some sort of amendment.
In that case, I motion to approve the modification for the existing two thousand nineteen site plan review. For forty-seven and forty-nine Cottage Street for a three-story mixed-use building for Terrace Harness Patel.
Seconded.
All right, voting to approve, uh, James?
I.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
I.
And I am an I. So Kevin, we'll, we'll try to get a decision together as soon as we can and get it out to you and. Hopefully get the ball rolling. We can.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Couldn't ask for much more. You guys are very, uh, accommodating and I, and I appreciate you taking care of this tonight very much.
Our pleasure. Thanks to you and Dan for.
Yeah, thanks for all of this.
Yep. Take care, guys.
All right. Have a good night. Good luck. All right, uh. Curtis, anything else that we need to be aware of for other business or administrative?
Minutes.
Oh, yeah, minutes. Good catch. James? I knew there was a reason you guys were here. Uh, all right, so, uh, first up, we had minutes for Tuesday, March second.
I motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, approving March second minutes. James?
I.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
I.
And I am an I.
Motion to approve. Approve, motion to approve.
Seconded.
Approving March sixteenth. James?
I.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
I.
And I am an I. Next up, April sixth.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Approving April sixth. James?
I.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
I.
And I am an I. Wow, this was quick, guys. Well done.
Efficient, well-oiled machine.
I know, and I think we got a meeting next week, but it's all zoning amendments.
So there's two, um, and Jeff was saying, so, uh, obviously Jeff and I are both still staff to the planning board. The, the organic division of labor has right now fallen that I'm doing a lot of the site plan review stuff. And Jeff's doing the ordinance review stuff with me doing some of the background work, behind the scenes stuff, right? So Jeff is in charge of forwarding two things in preparation for this meeting. There's, um. Want to say like a, a housing amendment and the, I want to say the solar amendment as well, but forgive me if I'm just totally wrong.
No, I think it's the cannabis delivery. I think solar is still in the pipeline, so that the housing, I think has two components. One is the A B U, the accessory dwellings.
Yeah, yeah.
And the second, I think, is modifying the multifamily, um, stuff. Some of the things we looked at when we were looking at the Loudville project. And then the other is hopefully getting over the finish line on the cannabis delivery thing that we discussed, um, last month. I think solar still.
Yes, you're right. You're right. You're right.
So that'll be interesting. And I think they're actually, I think ordinance is working on it right now with Jeff on another Zoom. Jim?
On another note, I was just curious if there's been any movement on finding us a fifth and a alternate.
I've heard there, there are some promising people in the pipeline.
Right, good news.
Yeah. Until then, don't get sick.
No one can.
And no recusals.
Exactly.
And no no votes unless you realize you have a pocket veto. Your no vote is a pocket veto. Um, all right. I think that's it, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, to adjourn. James?
I.
Harry?
Hi.
Chris?
I.
And I am an I. Well done, folks. Have a good week. See you next time.
Thank you.
Best of all. Bye.